Everybody to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. Thank you for being here. We don't have too bad of an agenda tonight. But first of all, if I can ask you to all please rise for tonight's invocation, which will be given by Pastor Bill Quinn with Trinity Presbyterian Church. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day. You created us, let us rejoice and be glad in it. Thank you, Lord, for blessing us by allowing us to live in this community that's blessed with so many resources. What comes with such blessing is great responsibility. Guide our leaders, guide them in their wisdom and decision making. Guide us as citizens to be good builders of community. We also pray for our police officers, protect them and guide them safely in their work. And we also pray for our public servants, our public workers who do the work that we ask them to do, protect them as they do work, sometimes dangerous, bring them good health and safety. Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right. First item on tonight's agenda will be to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting and the work session that was held on the 10th of June 2024. Do you have any additions, deletions, or changes to those minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 10th work session and regular city council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Mayor, your report, please.
Good evening, council. Just a couple things. One, tomorrow, we break ground on the Flying Creek Nature Preserve. I'm very excited about doing that. That's tomorrow morning. All of you hopefully will be there. This is a general invitation to the public to attend if you'd like to. There'll be some logistic things that everybody will have to pay attention to on the signs because we'll be parking at the Fairhope docks and then there will be a bus to bring you over because we're limited on space there. But again, this is a legacy project for Fairhope, something that we've been looking forward to for a number of years since that parcel was purchased from the Dias family and just really excited to be able to start that. Not only the trails and everything that goes along with trails, the birding blinds, the outdoor classrooms, but also the nature center there. So it's going to be an exciting project and excited to get that started. Also want to let everybody know, and it was mentioned in the work session, that we did bring our new water well online last Friday. We are getting close to 2 million gallons more water a day, which is, thank goodness, because we need it right now, as hot as it's been. And people are using a lot of water and of course with the growth that we've seen and the houses that we're adding and the businesses that we're adding, we need that extra capacity. The other thing is we, on July 8th, and George Ladd mentioned this during the work session also, that we will start paving of Section Street. And that is from Bayou to Fells. That will be done overnight. So folks, if you'll just pay attention to that, from 8 o'clock to the, I think 6 o'clock in the morning is what he said, we'll be paving Section Street. And then also, before we meet again, we'll celebrate July 4th. So looking forward to a great celebration down at the pier for that. Paige and her staff have been working really hard on that. Fireworks at dusk, usually around 9 o'clock, and Baldwin pops there on the bluff, the concert and everything. So it's always a great day in Fairhope. It's just kind of small-town Americana with all the flags out and all the festivities. So hope everybody enjoys that and will come out for the July 4th celebration. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is public participation. If you would like to come address the council for items five through 20, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will be given three minutes. If you have anything else to bring forth before the council that's not on the agenda, you'll be given an opportunity at the conclusion of tonight's agenda. Seeing no, and I will close public participation for agenda items and move to council comments. Councilman Conyers.
No comments from me.
Councilman Robinson.
Thank you for sharing your time with me, Councilman Conyers.
Yes, sir.
So two years ago, or actually three years ago, the city council approved the city to move forward and build those four new fields that you see coming into town by the rec center. Those were incredibly needed at the time because we were sharing fields, the population has, had gotten so big, and the Fairhope youth baseball was busting at the seams. So the creation of those four fields allowed every age group in Fairhope to have their own field to play and practice on, which was tremendous, a tremendous asset for us to have. We opened those fields last year, and I'm one of the parents and coaches that's had the opportunity to enjoy those. We didn't host any tournaments last year. We first, or we hosted our first tournaments at the, on those new fields in the last month. And they were incredible. The only complaint I heard was that we didn't get to host more tournaments on these fields. And so I wanted to thank Pat and his group for helping us with all that. Scotty was there, the whole tournament we had, we had great weather, fields looked great. But I brought with me the first team, the first Fairhope team to ever win a tournament on those fields. And it just so happens, it's my team. And so, so I brought these kids here today and their coaches, and I want to bring these kids up, let them have their picture with the mayor. Not only did they win that tournament, this team, over the last four years now that we've been together, has won, I think, 14 or 15 different All-Star tournaments, either winners or runners-up. They've won, they've been state runner-up two out of the last three years. We're hoping to change that this year. They leave Thursday to go to Lineville to play for the 11-year-old state championship. And the most important thing I can tell you about this team is that everywhere we go, people comment on their sportsmanship to the other teams. And that's important because they're absolutely curb stomping just about everybody they play. And so for the other teams to leave with a smile on their face based on how they play in those games really says a lot about those kids and their parents. And so I'll call your name up. Come on, guys, let's go to the front. We've got Hudson Hayden, we've got Charlie Leggio, we've got Fisher Fordman, Barrett, Barrett Root, Jack Cersey, Bart Robinson, Lynn House, Charlie Root, Matt Trichet, Josh Cover, 84-0. We've got my two guys that helped me do all this, Coach Tom and Ruth, and Lynn House and Sandy Brown. We also have a championship ring, a district championship ring for Mayor Sullivan. And so come on up here, get your picture made with these champions.
All right, guys. Good job.
Y'all make some ribbon and petals for the mayor, boys.
Kevin, slide your chair. Slide your chair a little bit.
Oh, get it? All right, boys and parents, if you'd like to be excused, now is your opportunity.
Man, that's some fancy, you know, that's some fancy stitching on those.
It's a custom.
Some triple stitching.
Custom order.
I bet.
Look good and play good. Yeah, they're good. They're a good little baseball team. And those are all the comments I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson. Councilman Boone?
No comment.
I just had one comment because it, the mayor's report that mentioned the 2 million gallons a day of water that's coming online and that came online recently. And Darrell, congratulations and to all of your staff and everybody that helped in the public works and all utilities that had a lot to do with it. Mayor, 2 million gallons is, by my calculations, about a 22% increase in our capacity. That'll, that'll go a long way. That's huge. Thank you. Yeah, well, well, you know, it's easy to sit up here and say, yeah, get it done, but it's harder to get it done. So kudos to everyone involved. That's, that's huge. All right, with that, I'll close council comments, and we will move on to item five, which is a final adoption of an ordinance to repeal ordinance number 1551 as amended by ordinance number 1622 and 1743 and codified as Chapter Two, Article Three, Division Eight. God, you remember that school, that old movie Back to School with Rodney Dangerfield? And he hadn't answered that question? I feel like that's what I'm saying right now. Sorry. And dissolve the City of Fairhope Historic Preservation Committee introduced at the city council meeting on June 10th, 2024. Mayor Jay, you addressed it in the work session. Jay, if you want to address it again?
Yeah, sure, I'm happy to. Since we passed an ordinance creating the city, or the Historical Preservation Commission, the ordinance for the Historic Preservation Committee is no longer needed, so this will repeal and replace that ordinance with the new one creating the commission.
Any questions? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion for final adoption.
Still moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, clerk, if you'll call the question.
Council President Pro Temp.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five. Thank you.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Item number six is final adoption of an ordinance of annexation of Jason Tickle, our Ford Jason Tickle property located on the east side of Section Street approximately 875 feet south of Twin Beach Road in Fairhope, Alabama. You see the tax parcel there, I won't read that, containing 17.75 acres more or less, which was introduced at the city council meeting on June 10th, 2024. Hunter?
It's a straight annexation to R1, could not be explained, so I'm sure we'll see a follow-up plan.
Did y'all catch that, straight annexation into R1? Okay, I'll enter motion for final adoption.
Still moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, will you call the question?
Council President Pro Temp.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item seven, site plan review and approval at the request of the owner, Gulf Health, Gulf Health Hospitals Incorporated for a site plan approval of Thomas Hospital Northwest Edition. The property is approximately .7 acres and is located at 750 Morphe Avenue. The planning commission unanimously recommends approval of SR24.02. Hunter?
Thank you. And this is not a surprise. Just as a refresher, this is, was a meeting, I believe, jointly between the Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment, and the city council mayor, quite a few staff members. We met and discussed briefly about this addition and the immediate need to get 24, 25 beds, hospital beds, to kind of relieve some of the overburdened medical service that is so critical to our community. This is the site, the site plan, I'll touch on just in a moment, but we also have a correlating amendment to the zoning ordinance. I believe that is scheduled to be in front of you July 22nd because that's an amendment, the advertising requirements take a little bit long to get to you. So you'll see that, that addresses some of the concerns we have. Now with the, with that said, this is the zoning map, part of the medical overlay district. This is part of Thomas Hospital. The image on the left shows the approximate location at the corner of Morphe and Ingleside, and that's the southeast corner. This is the site plan, and what you're looking at there is the footprint and the ground floor, which will be parking for employees and doctors. The access is on Ingleside, and you see the landscape plan as, has been approved. This is the kind of schematic of what the building looks like, matching the height of the existing building. That includes roof equipment, everything else. What you don't see in this is the revised landscape plan and what that will look like at maturity. The sidewalk that's added to Morphe and wraps the building. As we've said, you know, the medical overlay establishes and provides for the logical expansion of the hospital and the medical offices that are going there, and specifically calls out Thomas as the anchor to that district. And we've talked about different methods for the amendment. Basically what we, we came to is just name it. We talked about how many beds and what's appropriate. So the amendment you will see as part of the medical overlay district just names Thomas Hospital, so expansions to those beds. And through some help with the hospital, we came to some definitions. So height and setbacks are being addressed through that amendment, really won't discuss too much as part of this. This is more about what the building looks like and what's been done to accommodate the challenges. So the current plan will be, as we said, parking on the ground floor. The second floor will be 25 immediate hospital beds, with the third and fourth floor being left as a shell for the time being. But that, that introduces the opportunity for more beds in the future, I believe, and I'll let, let the hospital talk about that timeline. But I believe at least one floor is kind of an immediate need after these get built. But the landscaping plans, the planning commission did have some concerns, a little bit about the, the species. That was revised, sent back to us, and has been approved. Do you have one question? The sidewalk on Ingleside, you know, we try, strive for not having mid-block crosswalks. So they've aligned with kind of the existing parking, but we may need to look into a signalized crosswalk. That's been done at least in two locations. They're, they're solar. You know, that's really the only thing outstanding as far as pedestrian, and there's a picture of that location. This sidewalk will run on the south side of Morphe up to Medical Drive on the north side and have a cross, will not go all the way to Grino on the south side. Parking, as everyone knows, is, is always a challenge. And we, at Planning Commission, the site data table and the requirements were a little unclear, while I think even in the previous meeting, we all acknowledged that the, getting the hospital beds are primary importance, of primary importance right now. If we need parking, we can get that in a follow-up phase. A site data table was revised that actually shows, and we did not get a chance to confirm this, we don't have the square footage of the whole building, other than it's 91,000 square feet approximately of hospital, of medical office area with 195 hospital beds. We were surprised to see that there's a surplus of parking. Now, if that's a surplus, we probably need to change our ordinance because we, I think everybody acknowledged there's, there's additional need for some parking at the hospital. But from a compliance with, with the zoning ordinance, if these numbers vet, there's no additional required. You'll see that come up in the condition I'll speak to in just a moment. They did show us the schematics of the roof equipment. They're pushed to the center of the building to not be seen from the adjacent streets. Really, the, the stormwater, there's existing drains there, they're tying in, relocating a couple of inlets, but there's no additional impervious surface. It's an asphalt parking lot where this building sits. And the utilities, we are pushing a little closer to the road. There's a lot happening in a small area. There's a lot of relocates of existing electric, telecommunications. So that, that's going to be a little tight. The power is going underground. We've got a high voltage power lines that will be going underground, and that should be coordinated by the engineer of record. That's a requirement to get that underground. I think it was too close to the, the building for some of those high voltage lines and trees and everything else. This development and why that, we say this, did not trigger a traffic study. This is not a subdivision case. It's just a site plan review, so that's why there's, there's no triggering of a, of a traffic study. The volunteer fire department did ask, they've had a lot of helicopters, the air vax and things like that. We've landed in our parks and everywhere else, and I think a helipad was, used to be located on campus. Was there any opportunity to put that on the roof as you're designing a building? We did not get an answer to, for that question yet, but everything else has been addressed appropriately. So we do have, what we've shown here is what the planning commission recommended to you as we, as it came out of the planning commission, with red notes on any updates since then. So the staff and planning commission did recommend approval with six conditions at the time. The first one was to revise landscape plans, and they are to be approved by the City Horticulturists and Tree Committee Chair. Those have been approved. I think that condition can be struck if council would so choose. And then plans for relocating utilities and stormwater facilities with the permits, addressing the helipad option as requested. Required parking compliant with Table 4.3 of the zoning ordinance shall be provided prior to the buildout of last two floors. So we will confer, conform the, confirm the numbers that were presented. That was just a condition to get moving on this phase and see what the next phase of additional parking would be. Updated site table was required, they did send that. Again, we haven't had a chance to vet that. And then approval of the proposed amendments in the zoning case that will be in front of you on July 22nd. This should move, I feel confident that amendment is minor enough. It hits on the goals we talked about, but this site plan approval should allow them to be moving forward with the construction plans and anything they need in that while we wait on those advertising to get to you. But with that said, we do have representatives from Thomas Hospital here, if there's any questions of them, and I'm certainly here, this is a site plan, doesn't have a required layover, so can be voted on this evening if you so choose.
Questions, council? I have several. There was at one time, we had asked to have a master plan for the, for the site, and we don't have a master plan for the site, which, you know, part of it goes to that is the fact that the parking is not solved in this plan, it's going to be done in the future. What happens if you run into something sticky with getting the parking approved before they build out the last two floors? Who's going to enforce that? What, what steps are going to be taken to say, you're not going to build those two out until you get the parking worked out?
And so the condition there would, would be your reinforcement that that needs to be addressed. Now, we've gotten their information back, says they're in compliance with our, with our parking right now. We haven't had a chance to vet that, but I think that condition should remain while we vet that. I don't think it, certainly we can ask, I do believe there is still an intent to add parking to the site. The map, to answer your first part of that question, the master plan, I believe we discussed some options on the medical overlay district amendments, and we broke that into two parts. So one is right now dealing with setback in height. That's what this amendment coming to you. We really, until we kind of know what that master plan is, can't really amend the medical overlay district, overlay district further. So I think at a future date, we'll come back to you with some potential amendments for You know, the, the, really our only option is to wait and try to figure out, go measure and confirm all of the parking, so that's why we were trying to make that a condition, that before building permit for the upper two floors, any required parking would be resolved.
It seems like, and then when you bring back the zoning ordinance amendments, we're going to be forced to vote. We only have one choice, and that's to vote to approve because we will have already approved this based on some zoning changes, which is getting the cart before the horse.
Which is why I wanted to have the joint meeting, knowing that everybody's time period on this one. That's why I wanted to give everybody an opportunity to say, you know, and we're only doing, accomplishing two things.
Because I'm going to bring it up to say, just kind of, I think you might, you might need a wink and a nod from the council to say, yeah, we're, we're on board with that. I mean, but we haven't seen it, haven't seen the change.
And, and I can certainly send you that. We discussed, I think there was a little bit added at Planning Commission, I think it was good conversation. But the goal was just to deal with the setback in height requirement. So it's, I think, two cents.
In a joint meeting, we didn't have a problem. I'm just, just, just word of caution, it's just.
This is certainly a, we don't have joint me, I don't think, I think that was the first.
This is, this is an outside-the-box situation that we, that, but I think it warranted, warranted it based on all the things that we were dealing with and looking at. And, and the fact that, again, the medical overlay district was not created specific to the hospital building itself. It was for the buildings, you know, to the rear and maybe adjacent to it. So I think this is a, I think this is the best solution for the problem that we are currently dealing with.
And then my last, I want to point out is, is on the utilities. I mean, they have to go underground. The ordinance, you know, who's responsible for them putting them underground?
I don't, the one lucky part is I don't have to deal with the financing. I got a lot of headaches in making sure this is all done, but once it gets approved, then somebody else gets to figure out who pays for it, so.
So we were potentially signing a blank check on that?
No, sir. I, I think that's, that has another process of reviews, just not something that, in a site plan, we ask that specific.
Well, on the recommendations, if it's contingent upon working out the utilities, stormwater facilities, I mean, what if we couldn't come to a resolution? Once again, what if you can't come to a resolution?
Yeah, and I think that is, you know, that can stop a project at any point in time. You know, if we, we approve a plan at this stage, but not find, we're not approving finances or anything else. So that can and has in the past stopped projects. You know, when somebody, a subdivision, for example, they find out what the actual costs are.
Mr. Thompson, do you want to, I mean, feel free to, if you or anybody from the hospital wants to speak and try to answer these questions, do you want to address any of those concerns?
Somebody named Orman Thompson, president of Thomas Hospital, and I'm not really prepared to speak to the utility aspect of it.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but if you wanted to talk about it.
So just the importance of the project, as we all know, is significant. I mean, this whole, we've sat through the planning session, everything's about growth in the area. We want to provide the best experience for the patients in our area. We feel like that Thomas is really a cut above of most community hospitals, really in the southeast anywhere, and we just want to continue to provide the best experience. These beds were allocated to us or were approved by the state, so we've got some thresholds on when we've got to get these beds active. We had, we were approved for 30 beds. We built an additional five beds in our SICU. Now, we've got this project to do, the additional 25 beds. We don't have any additional space internally to build any more beds. Our master plan allocated for those beds internally, those are all built, so this is why the addition is important to us, important to the community as well.
My concern is the cost of putting utilities underground, is there's a tremendous cost with relocating utilities and putting them underground. Any home developer, when they build a subdivision, they're required in this city to put them underground, they pay for it. You know, this is private property. I'm just, I don't want to get in here in a few, a month or so and have to say that it costs the city millions of dollars.
And I think part of that is, you know, right now on, on me and on our electric department, that's like the on-call engineer that y'all are hopefully going to approve, that's what they're working on right now, is that plan to at least put that section adjacent to the hospital now that we, you know, once these setbacks are approved and the, the height and everything, knowing that we need to get those underground, we're working on that plan now. We'll have a cost estimate. We think we have a preliminary cost estimate, but nothing firm, so we'll have that firm number, and we'll be able to, you know, sit down and come up with that utility relocate plan.
But respectfully, mayor, you said, we have to put that underground.
We're going to have to put it underground with the height they are, they are building to and the set, because of the setback, because of the type lines, they are running alongside that building. So it's not.
If they want to build it to that height and us, I mean, why are we required to do that when we require every, all the other developers?
Well, I'm not saying we, I'm not saying we are required. I'm just saying the utilities are going to have to be underground. I'm not saying we have to do it, but they're going to have to be underground.
Yes, sir.
Hey, good evening. I'm Nick Combs with Thompson Engineering, I'm the engineer of record on this job. I just wanted to speak to, to some of your concerns here. We, there's a comment here asking about stormwater facilities, and that, that's included in the plans. We've got new drain lines shown in our plans right now connected to existing infrastructure. And it's important to note also that the, the parking is not exposed to the elements, so the, the drains there are just. so the, the drains there are just collecting drippage from vehicles, if you will. So, it's not a, a major collector of stormwater there in that parking garage on the ground floor. And we're working closely with city staff to, to resolve these concerns.
What, do you, you want to address the question of electrical utilities on the ground there?
Uh, we, we will be glad to coordinate with the city and, and what's required to make sure that everything's in compliance, but I can't, I can't speak as to who's to pay for those relocations as of yet.
There's a lot of gotchas there.
Well, the way I understand it is if they don't come to an agreeable compensation, you know, compensation with between us or partnership between us and the hospital, that department's not met, they can't build a building.
I think that's the utmost priority there. I just think to move it along, I think that's just a huge, huge point there that we need to get worked out.
Yes, sir.
That's just a lot of, a lot of, a lot of things that need to be done.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
I mean, just to reiterate, Hunter, what you're saying, effectively, the asked-for vote tonight on the site plan approval addresses the setback and the height. So, and which I'm good with, that's what we covered in the, the joint meeting.
And sorry, the, specifically the amendment that we come to you in a future date will deal with setback in height. A site plan review is looking at where things are located, do we have enough room for everything? Not a subdivision that's getting into bonding and it does, we don't have a process to, to get down in the weeds on how things are accomplished, what it costs. It's just, is there room for everything? And that was kind of, at the end of the day, that's what the site plan's typically used for, to what does it look like and, you know, making sure we're, we're coordinating all those things and there's room for everything.
I guess the elephant in the room is when that electrical bill comes in at $2 million and the hospital looks at the city and says, y'all get to pay it. We say no. What happens then?
Not a, I, I don't know who's, you know, that, that's certainly every site thing we do, you know, that before it gets permit, they have to figure out those costs. So, we're working on getting what those costs are and then who pays them out.
You know, I'm not saying that's what's going to happen. I'm just giving the worst-case scenario.
Sure.
Of a big chunk of change coming to the city to do this and, well, y'all have approved this, so we're going to start building it. Well, you can't start building until utilities are moved, until somebody comes up with an equitable payment.
Right.
I guess we don't start.
And that's, every, even subdivision, until that payment is resolved, you know, there's typically not a permit given.
Are, are there options other than going underground right there with the height, what, what it's going to be?
Not according to Ben.
Yeah. There's a, there's a distance and then we all, again, we have so many things happening in a small area. If this was sitting out in the middle of the parking lot, 100 feet away from the road, but we have a lot of things going on, so it's all of that in a small area, you know, with the transmission lines can't be within the landscape areas, can't be so close to a building, and I hope I'm getting that right, distribution and transmission or, I'll get those sometimes. We've got both there of some relocates. A lot of that is actually going to be moving south of Ingleside, I think was the rough plan, that was schematically where it was going to be, and then run Morphy as opposed to coming all the way up Ingleside on that side of the road. So, that does help, but again, that was getting underground from early on. We were told that if, if your building's going to be that close, those high voltage lines have to be underground.
I don't doubt it needs to be. I, I'm just going back to, to councilman Boon's points. That, that's really what it comes down to.
Yeah.
And, and, and you know, if we go underground prior to that intersection, then my understanding of the ordinance is, is that they're required to do it. Then you could ask the question, was that fair to them? Because did you put it underground? So, are you making them do that? I mean, there's a lot of scenarios and I'm trying, I'm trying to be, it may sound like I'm trying to pick, I'm actually trying to be fair to you as well.
Well, once again, we've had this discussion of a peripheral. It's been a lot about the site design, so I can't, I can't speak to what our commitment is, you know, because I don't know anything about what the cost is.
And I will tell you that me and Orman have been in constant contact. We've been talking. We know that there's, you know, there's issues to work out with that utility relocate, with it going underground. We do know that. We know we've got to work out the cost. And again, part of that, a burden's on us because we're waiting on our engineers to come back to make sure we have firm costs, we have preliminary, but we need to make sure we have firm. And then again, we'll continue to have that conversation, but I think we're, he's clear on the fact that we have to have a solution before we move forward.
They have to have it underground because they have a building at a certain height and our electrical department says they, it must be underground because of this building height. Then the building height's the reason it has to go underground. I don't.
The building height and the, the setback, as close as the building is to the lines. And again, the original medical overlay district had everything kind of going to the south because of, they have all their back-of-house operations. This was the most logical place for them to build this addition. We never assumed that it would, and so our lines run through there. There's some upgrades that are needing to be done. And again, it's just unfortunately the situation that we're in.
And I will say that hasn't been idle. I mean, Ben has been working, really expediting as much as possible, sometimes getting that through. I don't know, that was one of the on-call and why, what they were working on, so getting that approved so we can get somebody to look at it. You know, there was, we had our own little red tape to jump through.
So, council, the, the staff recommendations and the planning commission recommendation, I believe, are the same. There's six of them. And I think if you were to make a motion subject to the recommendations, that it would include all of that and it could be stopped. Now, I will say that address the heliport option as requested on May 9th. I don't really think there's much meaning in that at all. Address it, okay, we just addressed it, we brought it up. I mean, it, it doesn't say yea or nay and I don't really see forcing them to put a helipad on there either. I mean, is, is it bringing it up in a council meeting and effectively addressing it? I mean.
Well, and that's, you know, just a little bit of addressing the question that's been asked for two months, is it feasible? And if no, then I think that's, that's addressing it. We haven't, we haven't heard anything.
Does that come back to council and say, well, it's going to cost us X amount of dollars, we don't want to do it? Do we have to say yea or nay on the plan? It just, it seems a little harsh.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think reasonably we can, you know, we're, we're here to work through these. That came up from all the people we talked to and there's been a couple of months of us working together. That's the only lingering question that didn't get answered, so.
Where are y'all leaning on that?
I can speak to that a little, yeah, I can speak to that a little bit if you'd like. We have looked into the heliport request and, long story short, it would require modifications to the existing structural plan.
Sure.
Including, you know, a steel frame roof that'll total probably close to $2 million worth of additional funding to complete. And at this point, it's outside the budget for the project and it's cost prohibitive. So, we, we did look into this, we did get pricing and, and look at what needed to happen and that's what we have determined.
That's exactly what I would have guessed too, yeah. I don't, see, I don't put good conscience.
From a hospital's perspective, we're not a level-one trauma center. It's not required by the state. And at some point, when we get there, the, the facility, we can go back and put it and tie it back in, but at this point, we're not, it's not in the budget to do it.
So, you're saying scrap that line item from the proposal?
Yeah.
I think it's crucial to the building.
Yeah, to me, it's been addressed.
Well, I, I'd make a recommendation, enter, that we approve the proposed recommendation including the planning commission conditions, items 1, 2, 4, 5, 6. I just bypassed number 3.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion. I like that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. A little simpler anyway.
We'll talk, we'll talk.
All right. Item number 8 is a resolution, the city of Fairhope approves the annual procurement of two lip bulbs, poinsettias and other winter flowers for FY 2025 for the street department to CJ Rugrock, if I missed that, I'm sorry, and Billy Harrison Associates with a cost of $60,196.55 plus shipping costs. The cost will be included in the FY 2025 budget. Procurement is in agreement as allowed pursuant to resolution number 1650-10 adopted May 24, 2010 with designated like item floor exceeding $30,000, exceeding the $30,000 state bid limit. George briefed us on this on the work session.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Have a motion and two seconds to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Item number 9 is a resolution, the mayor Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract for extension number 2 of bid number 23-22 disaster debris removal monitoring services 2022 with True North Emergency Management per the terms and conditions of the original contract.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Was glad to hear that that went well on our last disaster and I know that that, the monitoring really saves us a lot of money and it makes us more favorable for reimbursement, makes it a lot easier to get that fee for reimbursement, so it's just very important, so. Any no further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 10 is a resolution, the mayor Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract for extension number 2 of bid number 28-22 disaster debris removal and disposal services 2022 with Crowder Gulf per the terms and conditions of the original contract.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 11 is a resolution to award a bid 2448 for asphalt and concrete repairs, annual contract, 11 Land LLC with a total annual estimated cost of $250,000.
Make a motion, approve the resolution?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. That's a not to exceed, right? Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 12 is a resolution, the city council approves this selection by mayor Sherry Sullivan for professional engineering services for RFQ PS 24-26 for the feasibility, design of a force main extension to the north of highway 104 to Dewberry Engineers and approves the not to exceed contract amount of $25,000. And Mr. Johnson briefed us on this in the work session. You have any questions for him?
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 13 is a resolution, the city council hereby authorizes mayor Sullivan to accept and sign all necessary documents related to the restore grant, S1P 25 FSU 1, Fairhope Sewer Upgrade Phase 1 Amendment Number 2. The amendment initiates a 12-month no-cost grant extension to April 30th, 2026 to allow time for equipment and construction delays. Of course, this is no cost, this is just an extension of time.
I make a motion, we approve the resolution?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 14 is a resolution to award bid number 24-46 for pipes, valves and fittings for the water main extension of State Highway 181 to Consolidated Pipe and Supply Company with a bid proposal not to exceed $313,913.20. We were told in the work session by Darryl, it's very competitive, very close competition. We had a lot of bidders on that and we came in a little under budget.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 15 is a resolution, the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of a KERS 8700 corrosion inhibitor for water treatment from Albert and Blakeney LLC as the sole source and authorizes procurement based on the option by the code of Alabama. The estimated cost is $90,000 and authorizes the treasurer to transfer budget funds in the amount of $90,000 from wastewater purchases of vehicles and equipment to the water treatment supplies for this procurement. Darryl said was a little bit under budgeted back during the budget time. Of course, we are treating another 2 million gallons a day, that'd be one reason why, that's 22% more if it's linear, right? So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the procurement.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 16 is a resolution, the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of C12, which is gas fluoride, C12 liquid at 12.5% and powdered lime for water treatment from Hawkins Incorporated and authorizes a procurement based on the option allowed by the code of Alabama in 1975. The estimated cost will be $25,000 and authorizes the treasurer to transfer budget funds in the amount of $25,000 from the wastewater to vehicles and equipment to water treatment supplies for this procurement. Per Darryl in the work session tonight, same reasons, same reasons as number 15.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item number 17 is a resolution, the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of liquid lime for water treatment from Burnett Lime Company and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the code of Alabama in 1975, the estimated cost of $20,000 and authorizes the treasurer to transfer budget funds in the amount of $20,000 from wastewater purchases of vehicles and equipment to water treatment supplies for this procurement. And just like 15 and 16, it was a little under budget. Now, we'll produce more water, we need a little more money. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the procurement. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Item 18 is a resolution, the city council approves this selection by mayor Sullivan for on-call professional engineering services, RFQ PS 24-27 for the electric department annual contract to Stewart Engineering and allows the mayor to negotiate the not to exceed fee to be approved by the council. Ben wasn't here earlier, the mayor covered this. She'll still, still bring back the not to exceed amount for final approval.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Item 19 is a resolution, the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of network switches and accessories to replace the switches at city hall and the police department that are on the Omni and National Contract number 01-145 and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The total not to exceed cost is $199,791.80. He did scope this down to get it under budget. I'll entertain a motion to approve the procurement.
So moved.
Second.
Two motions and two seconds. Any further discussion?
Nicely done.
Barbershop quartet. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 20 is an application for a restaurant liquor license by Robert J. Ryder, Bistro Foods LLC, doing business as Cafe Viola, 51 South Church Street in Fairhope, Alabama. Chief, is there any reason to deny this application?[1754.88] Okay, hearing no reason to deny it, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Public participation, if you have anything else to bring forth before the council, if you'll come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, you'll be given three minutes.
So my name is Harry Steele. I'm an attorney in Daphne, Alabama, and I'm speaking for Jennifer Blackwood. Ms. Blackwood lives at 58 Brown Street in Fairhope, Alabama. Let me first say that I like your city attorney and city prosecutor, Mr. McDowell. I think he's a swell fellow, and I've always thought of him as a worthy adversary and a competent attorney. But I'm here tonight to speak for Ms. Blackwood. Ms. Blackwood submitted her verified statement of claim. Is the city clerk here tonight? Assistant city clerk? And I think she can verify this was filed in July of 2023, a verified statement of claim. Okay. And to date, no resolution has come from that verified statement of claim. I'm assuming that you've all seen it.
I don't, can't say that I'm familiar with it.
So on May 28th, 2020, Mr. Paul Rip addressed this body advocating for Paula DiNardi and inquired about the inability of the City of Fairhope to convict Ronan McSherry of assault when it was in fact on video. His questions were never answered. I too gave Ms. DiNardi advice during that case, and she would often call me and say that she was being followed, and one night in particular, she called me and said there was a drone hovering just over her pool outside of her windows there. Now that Jennifer Blackwood is the victim, she's informed Mr. Rip, Ms. DiNardi, Mayor Wilson and myself that we were all under surveillance and that they use drones to fly over our residences and this types of things. So it's gone a little bit beyond just witness tampering and victim intimidation, I'd say. Video Ms. Blackwood has seen with her own eyes. And of course, potentially computer crimes committed by the best legal defense money can buy. During Mr. McSherry's most recent trial, Mr. Beck attempted to proffer a video of Ms. Blackwood and myself at a restaurant here in Fairhope where we were supposed to be talking about suing him for money damages. Of course, Hames had the good sense to ask the question, what in the world else would she be talking to a civil attorney about regarding Mr. McSherry? And he didn't allow him to proffer the video, but you got to understand, this was all because I didn't believe her, because she told me she was under surveillance, and I said, that's a bunch of bull. So we went to five different bars around here and restaurants, and sure enough, we picked up a tail and they videoed us. And then they tried to show it in court here. You know, like I said, this is, this is getting dangerously close to, and by the way, when they tried to show this video in court, I mean, I'm not, I wasn't the prosecutor that night, but my ears would have perked up and I'd have said, wow, that means they're tampering with my victim over here. No charges were brought.
All right, your time's up, and I'm going to give you another minute to finish up.
Okay, well.
We're not having, we're not having a trial here.
Yes, sir, I understand. So, so, so then there, then there are the claims made by Ms. Blackwood, and I know this is personal to some of you, I'm sure it is. So her verified statement of claim that she filed a year ago that you've ignored or haven't, haven't responded to, she, she says that the City of Fairhope, its councils, officers, agents and our employees have, you know, caused her harm. On two separate occasions, she reported to the Fairhope Police Department, a man named Ronan McSherry, an immigrant and local pub owner, attacked Jennifer Blackwood, hearing referred to as the victim, by physically assaulting her and thereby causing injury to her. Mr. McSherry was arrested and charged with domestic violence in the third degree. Stephen Hazelwood, the assistant city prosecutor for domestic violence cases, who is also Mr. McSherry's friend and also friends with several council members, I think some of y'all are social friends with Mr. Hazelwood. The victim, Ms. Blackwood, was approached by Mr. Hazelwood in a restaurant on New Year's Eve with a load on, where he tells her that, hey, you know that, that, that trial that's going to happen January 18th, 2023? You don't need to sweat that. We're going to, we're going to listen to you and your concerns, and we're going to change the venue, and there's no trials going to take place that night.
I'm just.
When in fact it did.
I've given you, I've given you.
Yes, sir.
A lot of time.
Well, thank you, thank you for your time, Mr. Blackwood.
I'm still trying to get, what was, what's the point? What are, what are, what's the ask? Are you?
Her medical bills that should have been part of the restitution, the harassment and obviously intentional infliction of emotional distress by your agents. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwood.
Good evening. Doug Greenard, 311 Wakefield. It's good to see you gentlemen again. Can't lie, you know, I'm disappointed that our president is not here tonight because I wanted to directly address him and his, I guess, his motive to eliminate public participation. This is a constitutional republic, and we have First Amendment rights, and for someone to do something like that, to even merely suggest it, to me is incomprehensible, but it speaks volumes. And so I wish he were here tonight so I could express that to him. For you and others who told him that it was absolutely wrong and unconstitutional, kudos to you. Thank you. That's point one. Point two is I wanted to address the event that took place in this building a week ago Saturday, which, by no other terms, violated Fairhope City law. I have printed out Article X, which directly speaks of sexually oriented businesses. Now, while they may not be a business, they participated as a business, and it happened in a building that is publicly built and funded. This is our government for the people, by the people. For this event to take place in this building is, A, incomprehensible, and B, against the law. I'd like to cite for you Article X, Section 8, 198, where it says that a sexually oriented business, which includes an adult cabaret, the offering for sale, rent or exhibit or the exhibit of items or services intended to provide sexual stimulation or sexual gratification to the customer. Have you seen the videos? Have you seen the pictures of what took place here in this building a week ago Saturday? And if anybody wants to say, and I'm happy to show them to you, I have them on my phone, unfortunately, but only for purposes of proving what transpired. If anybody wants to say that what took place in this building was not for sexual stimulation, which is against the law according to what the City of Fairhope says, you'd either be blind or dead. It's unbelievable. This is an agenda that it appears the city has supported that is based on sex. It was a freak show. It was a freak show, okay? Now, God love those people, but not what they're doing. And for the city to participate or allow it to take, take place, to transpire, incomprehensible. Thank you. What's next? You know, lingerie day? What's the next event that the city's going to sign off on? That's my question.
Thank you. Anyone else? See you and knowing I will close public participation for non-agenda items, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.